For every six students, one adult can go.
Free of charge?
Yes.
I, I wanna ask what the timeline is on this for needing approval. And I, and I'll tell you why I'm asking, because like Jerry, I have concerns about fundraising. And, and the ability for students who wouldn't be able naturally to afford this trip. I, I don't know that I feel convinced that there's a solid plan in place for that, and I, I might want to see one. So, prior to thinking about that in more detail, I'd like to know what the timeline is that this needs to be approved.
We were planning not to do any kind of parent meeting until we had approval, so we were thinking about November. The January deadline is for the first early bird registration. I think the early bird registration is maybe May. And, I mean, students can still sign up, but to get the triple points, it has to be by January. And, and we also thought if we could do it before the holiday season, that would be good for students to start getting things for the holidays, whether it's monetary or in terms of thinking ahead to luggage, that kinda thing.
Could just make a point here too, I'm sorry. Is this part of the regular curriculum?
No.
Is it required for kids to go?
No, no.
So I think that's an important difference between that. I know we wanna have kids that have the option to go with that, but it is, it is a voluntary piece, so.
Do you have any idea how many additional students might wanna go that would be prevented? But I mean, how many students have any taking Spanish versus the?
I, I don't have a number, no.
I'd be interested in that too, 'cause then maybe we can seek at some resources for those kids that really wanna go.
I definitely would like to look into, I know I had talked to Don Panaski last time, but it was too late. And now we're definitely early in the process that I think something could be set up, and we'd have to set up a way to have students apply. I don't know how to do that without allowing everyone to apply. I don't know how to do that where it's based on need, so that, those are questions that I have right now. I, I would look for expertise in that.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if a service club could adopt this organi- this group, kids. I don't know, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. Get it out there, maybe in the paper saying a service group, who knows?
What, what time of year is the trip? What time of the year?
Time of year, it's spring break for twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
So we have a year now.
You know, I, I think the question we have to think about is do we prevent the kids that can't afford it from going? Because there's some who won't be able to go for it. I don't know if that's right either. I think it's a great opportunity for those that can't afford it.
Definitely.
I don't disagree with that, Mr. Bodie. I really don't. However, I would take issue with the fact that we are an equal opportunity educational system, and that we should afford equal opportunities for all students, not based on financial ability to pay.
I think even our extracurriculars, we do have an obligation to try and make them accessible to all of our students' bodies and the student body, and the way that we do for sports and many other things. And so, certainly while it's not a requirement, I, I would like to feel like we've at least done due diligence to, to make sure that we're reaching out.
All that said, we could argue that we don't make it. We have activity fees that probably prevent some people from, some of our students from participating as well, so.
But we do have scholarship, we have scholarship programs related to those activities though.
I don't think we exclude any, but, any student from participating because of economic.
So we have, we have plans in place to address that. And, and so, I guess what my concern here is I don't see a plan in place to, to even look at that in, in a serious way at this point.
Could I comment?
Yeah, please do, please do, yeah.
Uh, we do have the parent meeting as just an information meeting, and at that time, we do find out the needs of the students who are interested. And, and then we do find out what parents are willing to help with that. And we have, as I said, we have three opportunities for students on their own to do something. And then there are things like doing the restaurant that don't involve a lot of, of time commitment that we're able to. So we do smaller things like that. But as I said in the past, when we have done those things, they, it, it depends on the student, but they, they don't, you know, they can have more monetary or not as much.
Well, maybe we can work together to maybe iron out some of those differences, try to get it so, I think we understand that we wanna try to get it so that we can offer it to as many kids as we can. And then maybe there's some other resources like service groups that can provide some of that offset for those costs.
I would move to table this until such time as the information is gathered.
So we have a motion to table this until more information is gathered. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is this a debatable motion?
Only as to, only as to when you're tabling it to?
Oh, yeah, so we need a timeline to table.
What is the timeline absolute? Timeline you'd have to have a decision?
Uh, the, the super early bird to get the triple realia points, which is, let me look again. Normally, it's five dollars per student, uh, so double ten by May and fifteen dollars by, I think it's January thirteenth.
So if we table this till December, would that give you enough time?
Uh, probably not.
Is there any reason not to table it until just November?
Okay, that's fine.
Well, it's your motion, so you have to decide.
Well, if we don't have enough time to go till December, then I guess we'll table it until?
Just a little clarity on the enough time. Are you saying that it won't be enough time for the, for the discount or not enough time for our research?
Uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be enough time for us to have a meeting and to get the students with the holidays, I think.
For the research? For us to come up with a plan for the board, is there enough time from now until December?
Oh, y- yeah, that would probably be enough time.
But that's not gonna be passed a timeline for the discounts?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, they have, the longer you wait, the less of it.
We should be okay if we wait, if you table it till December.
Okay, I'll table it until December, the regular board meeting in December.
Okay, so then we'd be looking at the May.
Well, we'll be looking at bringing this to the December board meeting.
Okay.
With the, the plan. For approval.
Right.
And then if they approve it in December, that should be enough time for those kids to get those discounts too?
I think it, I wanna say, I don't know if I have it here exactly, I think it's the thirteenth of January.
It says January thirty first.
Oh, is it the thirty first? Oh, okay, I had that mixed up, thank you.
Yep.
So I think we should be all right.
Okay.
Looks like the parameters are enough.
Am I correct in understanding that this trip does not involve any school district funding?
No.
Just an approval or support by the school board?
Correct.
So you're not asking us to expend school district funds?
No.
Just to prove the, the concept of the trip?
Right.
And then financing will come from outside the district?
Okay. Point of order, we have a motion to table, and I'm not sure it's debatable, so I wanna be careful, sorry.
It's only debatable as to when, so.
So, so when? So we, we have a, we have a timeline of the motion to be in the December work meeting of the board. We have a motion and a second. To table the motion, it's, uh, not debatable. So, um, let's go ahead and do a roll call. I think we'll start there. And this is just to table the motion, it's not to approve or?
Till the eighth.
Until the December?
Maybe the right date here.
December nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
Oh, no, seventeen.
Seventeen.
December seventeenth.
December seventeenth. It's been moving to table in this motion too, okay? So it's a, uh, let's go ahead and do the roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, James Wolf.
Abstaining. And my point is, I don't think this requires board approval, there are no school funds involved. It's people deciding whether children are gonna spend spring break.
Okay, sorry, it's, it's a non-debatable motion?
They're looking at me like, what?
No, no relapse either.
I wasn't debating, I was explaining.
Well, it is, uh, it is kind of a point of order or a parliamentary inquiry or whatever you wanna call it, is, uh, do we need to approve it, is what I'm hearing.
I think we better check our policies on field trips.
We, we've asked this question before, I don't remember.
We always have.
We used to do a baseball trip.
You, you could just table it, and during the process, I can go look it up and see whether or not. It's in the parameters of the school.
All right.
Start again.
James Wolf?
Abstaining. It's gonna pass, I, I mean, I'm not trying to.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Engbert?
Aye.
Kev Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Mr. Chairman, we have six in favor and one exception.
All right, motion carries the table. And at this moment, I'll just add one comment. This is, this is not, 'cause in any, any way, I don't think the trip would be anything less than amazing. That, that is not the point. It's about trying to make sure that we bring that opportunity to as many students as possible. So, I am quite certain the trip will go on and be approved and all of that. And I thank you very much for your time put into this, I don't mean to diminish that in any way, so thank you very much. Next item on the agenda. Consider approval of resolution from Minnesota State High School League Foundation application for grants for student participation.
Put a form for that, Kev?
There's nothing.
There's nothing that it's in?
Nothing.
It's a re- it's the standard resolution that is done every year. I didn't get that on there, I'm sorry.
It's not here.
It's done every fall.
So we have a resolution in front of us. Is Ken here to tell us about this resolution? I know it's one of those formality things, but it, uh?
I have table it for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we need to table that, so. Is there a motion to table this item until the next meeting?
I saw.
Is there a second?
Second.
There we have a motion and a second to table this item until the next meeting when we'll have some more information. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider approval of refugee school impact grant. I see some information here on this one, so.
Faribault Public Schools has applied for a refugee school impact grant from the Office of Refugee and Resettlement from the Department of Human Services in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to serve recent high school-aged refugees through after-school programming. The funding parameters do require the age and new-to-country criteria, when and what services are to be provided. As of October first, two thousand twelve, Faribault Schools identified thirty-two students who meet, who met the ORR school impact grant criteria. We anticipate that about twenty-five students will attend after-school programming regularly. It's a four-point-five hours a week, three days a week, so ninety-minute blocks. It is intensive English language training offered with homework help and with, uh, the introduction of a curriculum that is designed to move students who are, um, behind in terms of English literacy skills and acquisition from point A to point B a little quicker. So, just in terms of what the funds will be spent on, it's, it's about nine hundred dollars a student. So I did the math, that's times twenty-five. I didn't want to project that all thirty-two students would come regularly. So that is twenty-two thousand five hundred. Some of that will be spent on hiring some EL, EL specialists to deliver services to those refugees and the purchase of a curriculum called RIGER. That's it.
So I, I just, I'm not sure I understand here completely.
Okay.
So is this a grant we are applying for or a grant we have?
We have applied for it. The lead time was very, very short, so I wasn't able to get it to the finance committee in time. My apologies for that.
So we're approving the application of the grant?
Yes.
And normally, we'd go through finance committee, but timing kept that company.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you, now I understand. Any other questions, Ray Murray?
How, how does a student become eligible?
A student becomes eligible in that they've arrived to this country as of October two thousand nine or later as a refugee. So the, the group that we have in Faribault as a part of our community are the Somalis from Kenya, a camp in Kenya.
And so these are students that haven't had much formal education, is that right?
Probably not in the refugee camps, no.
I think just to add to this, one of the pieces that I think was really, we were very fortunate to have was the, the formation of this FAIR committee that you've heard in our community that is representative, representative of, of many different nonprofits within the, within the entire community. And as a result of that committee, and then also all the work that Ann has done with this process, she was able to secure this twenty-two thousand dollar grant for some extended education for, for these kids. So, it was a very collaborative effort on behalf of all those entities.
Yeah, thanks.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ann Murray.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ann Murray before she goes to sit down? And we do need to take action on this item. So I will entertain a motion to approve the refugee school impact grant.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, and a second, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, consider setting special board meeting, I'm sorry, skipped over, superintendent evaluation. Mr. Robichaud?
Yes.
Would you like to update us where we are?
The evaluation is completed. I have all the, um, uh, feedback from people who were asked to participate in the evaluation. I have done an analysis of that data and I've met with Tom and Jason to review that. I would like to recommend that we go into a closed session at the next board meeting in November to go through that evaluation and prepare a public statement regarding superintendent evaluation for his first-year performance as superintendent of six fifty-six.
Any questions for Jerry on this item? We understand what the plan is to do.
And for your information, it is legal for us to go into a closed session for performance evaluation as long as we bring the summary of that to the next board meeting.
Excellent, okay.
To the December board meeting, I think, right? If we meet in closed session after?
The results will come out in December, yes.
Next is, uh, consider setting a special board meeting, canvas votes for November thirteenth at four P M at the district office board conference room. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Just so everyone and including the audience is aware, this is simply a, a, a meeting for the board to, uh, address, um, the item, uh, I'm sorry, to confirm the election results. Uh, there's not much to this meeting. Um, any further questions on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
We didn't have the board on, having that closed session.
No.
No, no. Okay, um, uh, the item that we added, um, I wanted to bring to the board's attention.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will leave the board at this time, I'm not gonna be part of this witch hunt.
All right. Let the minutes reflect that, uh, Mr. Olson is leaving. So I apologize that this came so late. I wanted the, uh, board to be aware of some comments that have been made by one of our board members in, uh, um, uh, recent months. There is a mistake in these, uh, um, uh, here in terms of the dates that are on here. Are, uh, say twenty-eleven on all the dates when they should in fact say twenty-twelve. These are letters to the editor by Mr. Olson. Um, I have put, uh, on the policies, uh, here. Um, I'm bringing this to the board, uh, because I became aware of this weekend of the last letter to the editor by Mr. Olson. I've been approached many times over recent months regarding, um, items that Mr. Olson has, has written about by many community members. I think, uh, virtually everyone at this table has at some point come to me to express their concern about, um, the series, this series of, of letters. And so, uh, I thought it was important that we, uh, address it particularly when it pertains to an important matter that's coming before the, the city, before our community in the upcoming week. So, um, to, to look at this in part, there's, there's, uh, five items here, which include, um, I'm sorry, there's four items here. Three letters to the editor that have occurred over the last three months. There were many before that, as you know. And, uh, a piece of literature from a, a committee. And at the bottom, it's hard to see there, but it does have Mr. Olson's name on it and his, uh, position as a school board member. And, and so I want us to, um, to think about, um, our board policies. Um, I'm concerned about whether or not they may have been violated. Number two oh nine, the Code of Ethics, talks about supporting board decisions, even if a position is different to a particular board member. It also talks about recognizing the integrity of all the people on the board and then predecessors to the board and, and doing their work with integrity. And making no disparaging remarks in or out of school board meetings about other members of the school board or their opinions. And to be clear, this is, uh, not something I'm, I'm coming up with now that I think should be here, this is, this is board policy. Additionally, I, um, there is a, in our statement of guiding principles, and, and you have the full, um, policies in, in front of you, it says, "They shall also ensure that the community be informed of the needs, purposes, and values and the status of the schools." And to me, that comment means that, uh, we shall do our utmost to, uh, make comments that reflect the best information that we have, that are as accurate and, um, and careful as we can make them so that we are working to, uh, inform the community and not misinform the community. I'm going to point out, uh, a number of the items, 'cause I think they're important, that are contained in these letters to the editor and, and this literature. Um, I'm also informed today, I didn't realize that, that there are a number of, of, um, ads that have appeared in the paper with Mr. Olson's name in them that contain much of the same information, and, and I think it's important. When I go to part five, I'm gonna sort of work, uh, from the back to the front. There are items in here that talk about, uh, the board has the ability to roll back salaries and free salaries and cut administration, uh, cut administration salaries. This is raises concerns for me, these are all groups that we need to negotiate with and to imply that perhaps we could do this unilaterally or to imply, um, outside of the negotiating table, what should happen. Raises concerns to me. But more concerning to me is that the phrase stop paying bonuses. I think this board knows that there has never been a bonus paid to any member of this district at any time. That is a gross mischaracterization, mischaracterization, and I don't know how it can be accomplishing anything except to, um, misinform the community. In parts two, three, and four, you see some letters to the editor. Many disparaging comments made about members of this board. And many disparaging comments made about decisions made by this board in particular with reference to the, uh, um, to the teacher's contract. An implication that, again, there are bonuses being paid to teachers, that attorney fees are, have been increasing dramatically. In fact, it's just the opposite of the last three years, our attorney's fees have gone down. And I think it's unfortunate that we would imply anything other than that to our community. But this, this most recent letter that has me, um, the most concerned, I had heard about a number of these things, uh, being stated unofficially, but, uh, when I saw them in print, I thought it was really important that we talk about them. In this letter, I have, uh, underlined some of these things. In it, it is implied that the board unanimously voted, if you look at the bottom of my underlining, "A hard salary freeze for the staff as a part of the budget." I think that implies that this board at any point approved a hard salary freeze, which we simply could not do before we sat down to negotiate each and table. We made a decision not to put, uh, salary changes into the budget because we did not have that information at that time. That's very different than the saying that we chose a, a hard salary freeze and then reversed ourselves by, uh, settling on the contract that we did. Many times, Mr. Olson has, has, uh, stated that we are going way over budget on community education. And I think that's, that's a, um, a very unfortunate statement to make. We were, uh, contracting with the city for an amount of a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. We brought that back to our, our district in order to spend, uh, within the district, uh, still on community education. The district, the community education budget is in fact much larger than a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. It's more like one point seven million. It has not changed. None of it can be spent in the general, um, education fund. None of it could be used to solve the, the budget challenges that we face. And to imply anything else is simply inaccurate. Additionally, here, uh, there are, uh, uh, statements about buyouts of former employees and union grievances and creating high legal expenses. Again, our legal expenses have gone down. But more importantly, uh, uh, this district, uh, as a school board, we are at times faced with making very difficult decisions that are often not choosing between the lesser of, of two difficult decisions. And I think it's very unproductive to, uh, um, comment on the buyouts of former employees when I don't think anyone on the, the board took any joy in, in, in those difficult positions we are placed in. But the one I wanna highlight the most is, uh, the, the comment that this board plans to add administrative positions, five additional assistant principals. This one strikes me the most. Uh, I have been involved in discussions about what the levy will encompass for many months. At no time do I recall being a part of any conversation that we would ha- add administrators. That is simply false. And it bothers me tremendously that a member of this board would go out in public and claim that this board, um, has lied to the community about our intentions. That is well beyond the pale, in my opinion. And so I thought it was important that I bring this. That is, by the way, also apparently appearing in ads in the daily news, which I find, um, uh, very distasteful in my mind that, uh, one of our board members would choose to, um, cast aspersions on this board that we are misrepresenting ourselves to the community. And so I thought these were very serious accusations being made by Mr. Olson. Unfortunately, he's not here now, um, to comment on them. I did not bring these here to you tonight for, for any action. They were brought to my attention and I wanted to make sure that we noted them. I am interested in any comments that you might have. And then I also think that we should discuss whether or not, uh, we may want to pursue the ideas of other actions, uh, in the future. So, um, I'll stop talking now and open this up to any comments from, from the rest of the board.
Mr. Chair, um, you articulated very well, uh, the concerns that have been expressed by people in the community as well as myself as one of the subjects of Mr. Olson's letters to the editor. And, uh, you discussed and presented a very solid reason why it's important for us to bring this up now and not wait, uh, later, that there's misinformation, incorrect information that have been presented in letters to the editors. And, uh, as one of the subjects of Mr. Olson's letters to the editor, editors, I would like your permission to, uh, make some comments.
Please, please do.
And I, if you're more comfortable, I will stand away from the board table and go to the podium or can do it here, um, whatever your comfort level would be.
Uh, I think it's an agenda item, so I'm comfortable with you addressing.
I feel like I'm talking to the empty chair here. But I do hope that Mr. Olson will, um, uh, look at the tape later when he's had a chance to, uh, reflect on what he's been saying. Let me start by, uh, clarifying that I am speaking for myself. No other board member or for the board member as a whole. No other board member or for the board members as a whole. I support Mr. Olson's right to freedom of speech. I so exercise that, and thank goodness, we live in a country where that can take place. And Mr. Olson has chosen to exercise that right with his letters to the editor. I now choose to exercise my right to freedom of speech by making some comments tonight. Mr. Olson, I find it concerning that you would actively campaign for my defeat in this up and coming election. I just, it's very concerning that that would take place. When Mr. Olson ran for reelection two years ago, I showed him respect and did not make any public comments for or against his election, in spite of our different views, which I know we do have different views. I respect his right to run for the school board. As a matter of fact, when Mr. Olson won reelection, I called him and offered my congratulations and offered an olive branch to work together for the improvement of our education for our students in this school district. He accepted that olive branch. During the time that we have served together on this school board, I have been respectful of Mr. Olson during our disagreements, our discussions, and our decisions. I have always and will continue to respect his right to vote as he wishes. But also, I expect that we, as board members, would honor the decisions that are made collectively. I have fulfilled my offer of reaching out to Mr. Olson, and that's why I find it concerning about his public comments about my reelection. In my opinion, he has reduced this election to the level of partisan politics that has no place in a school board election, period. Partisan politics do not belong at this level of government. We are not conservatives. We are not liberals, as Mr. Olson claims we are. Our purpose, anyone's purpose, of serving on a school board should be to provide direction and setting policy that will ensure that our students receive the best education they can by highly competent and appropriately compensated teachers who care about teaching and learning and have nothing but the compassion for students. And I can think of no teacher in this district who does not have that as their absolute mission. I want to make it very clear to Mr. Olson and others in the audience and anyone listening that my sole purpose of serving on the school board is to, in fact, assure that students are receiving that high-quality education. For anyone to presume otherwise is dead wrong. Moreover, I would hope that anyone sitting here at this table or running for the school board has that as their same goal. As to the notion that he has made a couple of times in some of the letters to the editors that I'm a tax-and-spend PhD, I find that disconcerting. First, on a personal note, I have worked hard, and my family has sacrificed much for my education. I am darn proud of it, and I'm proud of what I've accomplished. And for him to demean that education is insulting. Also, when it comes to funding education, if the individuals in St. Paul would live up to their commitment to fund education at the levels that it's supposed to be, we would not have to go to our taxpayers for relief. Mr. Olson has attended many, many MSBA conferences, and he knows how grossly underfunded public education is. That's on their agenda every time you go to an MSBA conference, is we need more money for public education in the state of Minnesota. And with that knowledge, I find it very, very confusing how Mr. Olson can be against the levy. I want to say one last thing, and that with the time remaining to the election, it is my hope that we will keep the dialogue civil and respectful and speak the facts. I fully intend to, and I hope Mr. Olson will as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. I want to stay focused on the particular comments that we have in front of us. But I think, speaking for myself, go well beyond attacks on myself and Mr. Robichaud and go to attacks on this board and decisions that we have made in the integrity of this board. To claim that this board plans to do something other than what we have told the community we plan to do is nothing less than an attack on the integrity of all the members of this board. Is there anything else that anyone would like to say with regards to this?
Well, for what, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Robichaud.
I notice in our Code of Ethics, in our guiding principles, we don't have any recourse that we talk about when somebody breaks this Code of Ethics. Are you aware of any, or is it possible to add them? Or what are the legal ramifications?
Well, this is a second question, I think, for us to consider tonight about whether or not this board wants to pursue this. Boards do have the ability to censure board members. It's a serious issue. It's a serious legal issue. I think it is very true to say that anyone has a right, their First Amendment right, to say what they wish. I would add to that that having a First Amendment right to say what you wish does not absolve you from any consequences of what you say. And when you say things that are patently false about the actions of this board and when you actively violate board policy after repeated discussions, this is, as you know, we have discussed this with Mr. Olson in past meetings, trying to be less public about it, but nevertheless, trying to stress the importance of what it means to work together as a board. I think there's very little reason to believe that this was a simple mistake or an honest mistake after repeated times. So I think there's a question for this board about whether or not we would like to consider a matter of censure. It's not something that we would ever take action on tonight. It is a legal matter. So if we were to do so, I think the procedure would be for us to instruct Superintendent Sescor to, I have spoken with MSBA about what this would entail. Their advice is to contact our attorneys and to ask them to give us legal advice on what the grounds are for censure in light of the board policy and what actions a censure might imply, what the impacts of a censure would be on that board member. So I don't have more information than that, but I think that would be the question for us tonight is whether or not we want to instruct Superintendent Sescor. And we can do that simply by conveying the wishes. I can, as chair, I can instruct him to do so. But I want to have a sense that we're, whether or not this board is interested in pursuing that or if we're interested in, for the sake of, while I'm not sure why we wouldn't be interested in, but perhaps people have a reason for why we might not be interested in it. And so I would certainly, I'm looking for feedback on that from this board so that I know what the feelings of this board are and whether or not we want to pursue this. Because I think it does take this to a more serious level if we decide to go that route. We need to decide if that's important for the board to do.
Well, I'm more concerned about the future going forward. And I'd like our policy committee to investigate what kinds of actions can be taken when a board member, anytime in the future, breaks this Code of Ethics and our guiding principles and incorporate it into our policies so that going forward, any board member coming on knows what the ramifications are for grossly abusing the policies.
I think I would say that's probably not a question for our policy committee, which has no expertise in that, but it's probably a question for our attorneys.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm saying is, we should get it written, we should get it written into our policies.
So as a person who's not seeking reelection, so I guess I've avoided being part of the tax-and-spend label here. And I don't have a PhD, but...
You do have a doctorate.
I do have a doctor of science. Anyway, I guess I, I mean, I'm as offended, I think, as anyone else, but before I make a statement as to whether or not I'd want to pursue censure or some other type of activity, I would have to sleep on it a little bit, so.
Well, and I think the question, what I would like, the only thing I would suggest that we advise Superintendent Sescor to do is to pursue information on whether or not, whether or not we want to seek a censure action, I think, is a whole another step. I think the first thing is to get some more information on what that would mean. But I certainly respect if you still would like to sleep on that. I don't know because it's not an actionable item. We don't need an action to ask for information from our attorneys. I can do this at any point should the board convey that.
Mr. Chair, I would concur with that. I would like Superintendent to check and see, you know, has there been violations of our policy? We assume there have been, but, you know, let's have a legal interpretation of that to find out if there has been, and then bring that back with some options of what are available to us as a board member as a board to address. I too, Howard, am very concerned about the future. The makeup of the board may be a little different after November 6th. And it may not be so significantly different. But I think as we move forward here, this board is going to have to face some further critical decisions. I think it's important to understand what options are. I'm most I too, I'm very concerned about the future.
I think many boards do have provisions for removing board members for different causes. We just don't have the bottom line.
I think, just to clarify, I think censure is not a removal. And I think removal is beyond our legal power. I'm quite clear on that, that as an elected official, we have no power to remove a sitting board member.
I'd like more information.
As a member of the majority, in a number of references in these letters and ads in the paper and whatnot, I am discouraged by the, not the right to disagree, but by the tone of the disagreement. I share with, I thank Mr. Robichaud for eloquently stating the purpose of being on this board, which is to try to ensure a quality education for all the students of this district. And to use only one example to be thought or suggested that I or any other member of this board has squandered the taxpayers' hard-earned money. I find discouraging, offensive, but more discouraging in that we've had a number of spirited discussions about how we should proceed and address the needs in this district. And everyone, we have not all disagreed at any one time, I don't believe, but we have come to a consensus or a group, not, I take consensus back, a group decision. And I think that the summary of policies that is provided here have been violated in spirit, if not in letter. And I am supportive of the, at least the investigation of how this board should address these types of issues. It is one thing to speak as a citizen, and we all have that right and have nothing but respect for everyone's right to do that. But when you sign your messages as a member of the school board, while the title may be accurate, it does not necessarily reflect the board process nor the board decisions. So I think there's, I'm concerned in that regard as well. So I'm not saying it concisely, but I'm supportive of what, Jason, you seem to be suggesting, that we at least look at this situation, get some legal advice. And I'm also very encouraged by what Howard said earlier of being concerned for the future because the future is going to contain as many or more challenges as we have dealt with in my two years on the board and my years of watching the board. And unless we can work together, we will not have nearly as great a chance of success of meeting those challenges. And whatever disrupts, you know, I'm not trying to discourage disagreement. I'm encouraging disagreement. But I'm also encouraging the process by which we as a group try to come to some collective wisdom about the issues that face us.
All right, any other questions or comments? I think I'm going to take the comments here as an indication that we would like to ask Superintendent Sescor to seek out information from our legal. I don't think we need a motion. We don't need a motion. I can direct him to do so. I just want to state my feeling of the table is seeking information is appropriate at this stage. Decisions on whether or not we would seek any action are left for further discussion. I'm not implying tonight we should decide. I think we all need more information before we can make a decision about whether or not it's appropriate to seek any action. But we can't make that decision without knowing what that might entail. So I'm going to direct Superintendent Sescor to seek out that information for us, and that'll be shared with the entire board when it comes to our legal advice. Any other comments on this item before I move on?
Can we add MSBA's Code of Ethics to the policy meeting for next?
Just as a last comment, I want to be very clear that I take no joy in bringing this item to the board. I have been approached about having this discussion many, many times. And I felt, in particular, when a line was crossed and blatant information that is false was put out there, questioning the integrity of this board, I felt like it had to be addressed. So I thank you all for your patience and your time in addressing this issue. I'm sorry that Mr. Olson would not stay here to be a part of this discussion. Okay, I'm going to move on to the final things. Other items of information. We do not have our student-student representative with us here tonight. School board members, items of information. One item I would mention, I have a sheet here someplace from the Southeast Service Cooperative asking for nominations to serve on their board. This is a cooperative, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's a cooperative where we work with this cooperative to purchase services as a district so that we can reduce costs by working with others. Is that correct, or am I?
They have a number of different things. They have its professional development, its legislative updates, its financial updates, its variety. It's like the South Central.
So if anyone has any interest in serving on that, I would be happy to nominate you for service on that board. Any other items of information?
Question, do you have any information about the level of obligation to serve on that board? Is it a monthly meeting, a quarterly meeting?
What I have is a pamphlet I can hand you. I'm happy to hand that over to you, and you can let me know what you think based upon that.
Thank you.
Are you looking for a nomination, Mr. Sescor?
I'm inquiring for information.
Any other questions or items that you, any board members, would like to share?
I'd like to ask Ken a question. The football team won Friday night. When's our next game here? Okay.
And is there, how about Fairbowl BA, are they at home also?
Oh, they're not.
They're not, okay.
And then the volleyball team? And then the volleyball team.
I thought we might have to share this.
Rochester, Rochester Mayo High School on Thursday.
So they beat Winona?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the way, our superintendent of communities of Waterville, Legion, Morristown.
They don't have.
We're talking about the drowning that happened.
Any other, any other comments from board members? All right, Superintendent?
Just one thing, we actually, I know a lot of you put your computers away and this is going to be a challenge for Howard on Robert's Rules of Order. We actually do now have the resolution for the Minnesota State High School League Foundation application for grants for scholarships.
I saw it.
I sent it to everyone's email as an attachment. If you'd like me to read the resolution or, Jason, if you want to read the resolution, if you see that, it'd be nice to go back and approve that.
Well, first, I think we need to get a ruling on whether or not, once we've tabled it, we can untable it.
Yeah, we can take it off the table again, sure.
Okay.
I have one issue though, since there's one board member not here.
We still have a quorum.
Right, but I don't know if he would.
Majority can lay it on the table, a majority can take it off the table.
I think we have a quorum and that board member chose to leave, so.
Okay, just making sure.
So, so we need, before we do anything, I think we need a motion. We can't debate it or talk about it until we have a motion to untable. I'm not sure what the official motion is.
So what are we taking off?
We're putting on the table.
We're bringing back.
We're bringing back the item that we tabled, which was to clarify.
Ten A, no, ten B.
Ten B.
Minnesota State High School League.
Oh, grant for student participation.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove from the table Resolution 10B to consider approval of resolution for Minnesota State High School League Foundation application for grant for student participation.
Okay, we have a motion to remove this item from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, it's a non-debatable item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, okay. So now that we have it back on the table, Ken, would you like to enlighten us as to what this motion is about?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to apologize. I actually was homesick all day today and just watching on the, watching on TV. I untabled and kind of panicked for a couple of reasons. This is the third or fourth year that we've had this in front of you. This is the State High School League Foundation. This is from taxes, from state tournaments and all that kind of, those kinds of things. This is set aside for use for the foundation or those taxes are set aside for use by the foundation. And we are allowed to apply four dollars from that that we, as a school district, have used to provide scholarships to those kids who cannot pay for activities otherwise. It, the past couple of years, it's been about somewhere between sixteen hundred and two thousand dollars. And so, you know, that's kind of significant. That's why I came down here to make sure that we, because the challenge is we have to use our October Mars numbers, so we have to wait until then and then it has to be in by November 1st. So if it wasn't passed today, we're out that money.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We acknowledge that Mr. Hubert came out of the sick building.
Let him go home.
The minutes will reflect the efforts of Mr. Hubert to help out with this. Thank you so much for coming and saving us on this. We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion?
Just thanks to Drew too, we're able to pull that out of the internet site, grab it and send it to you guys too, so thanks.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Sorry, so resolution, we need a roll call.
James Wolf.
Aye.
Jerry, Jerry Robichaud. Jason Ingraham.
Aye.
F. Davis.
Aye.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
And I vote aye, Mr. Chairman, we have six in favor, zero against.
Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, we're down to the very last thing. Dates to remember, November 5th. Sorry, not the very last thing, Superintendent, sorry.
That's fine, I just wanted to send our condolences to Waterville, Legion, Morristown for the tragic death in that community and them dealing with it. So we do support them and hopefully they're making their way through this, but I did want to make that public announcement. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Absolutely, thank you, Todd. Okay, next, dates to remember. November 5th at 5:30 in the district office, there will be a school board work session. November 6th is election day. November 12th, go out and vote. November 12th is Veterans Day. November 13th, which is a Tuesday, an abnormal day for board meetings made necessary because of Veterans Day. On November 13th at 7:30 a.m. will be the finance meeting in the district office. November 13th at 4:00 p.m. will be the special board meeting to canvass the election results again at the district office. Again, on November 13th at 5:00 p.m. will be a policy meeting at the district office. On November 19th at 4:45 p.m. will be the curriculum committee at the district office. And on November 19th, we will be right back here at City Council Chambers for our regular board meeting at 6:30 p.m. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
A second, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.